You are watching Access to the Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the March 7th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot access the port county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our March 7th, 2023 meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. Please take a moment and silence electronic devices and stand for the pledge of allegiance and silent prayer. Ms. Nyelup on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Preswalinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jacobs.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Nyelup. We have a quorum. For subapproval of minutes of our regular February 21st meeting and our February 28th executive session.
Motion to approve the minutes, sport.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Preswalinski and second by Councilman Brian Dabney. Ms. Nyelup on the roll call, please.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Preswalinski.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyelup. Reports of standing committees. Councilman Max. Councilman Deitch. Reports, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Michigan City Finance Committee met on today, March 7th, 2023, and we discussed the Riverboat Fund Number 2235 in the amount of $34,520.46. That was for Applied Concepts Inc. Stalker for $11,094.50, Maximum Power Sports, $23,425.96, totaling $34,520.46. The Finance Committee made no recommendation. Claims was not approved. Reasoning is, um, commitment Paul Preswalinski questioned the, one moment. Questioned $23,425.96, which was for Polaris, which is a ATV for, um, the lifeguards. And he wanted to know, he questioned and asked Controller Hoffmaster, was this due to, should this not come out of the lit? Because this will fall under health and safety, along with the, um, 11,000. All right. $11,094.50 as well for the Applied Concept Ink Stalkers. Also, um, the Riverboat's statements of cash position for fiscal year to date, three, um, March 7th, 2023 ending balance is $6,936,168.34.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. My name is Drake. Fund 2235 Riverboat Claims, $34,520.46. EFT Zero Fund 2504 Board Development Zero EFT Zero. For total claims in the amount of $34,520.46. Is there a motion? Uh, Councilman Dabney.
Quick, did we get an answer? Or did anybody ask that question of, you know, why you did not approve? Did we get an explanation of what that was all about from Polaris? No.
I don't think the question was asked to Polaris.
No, the question wasn't specifically about equipment. Does question in, um, the train of thought was that this should be out of the lit money? And that's what we brought up there. Okay. You know, the lit safety money. So, I, I believe that it still should be taken out of the lit money in that, uh, we can address it at the next council meeting, you know, they can put a, uh, or ordinance in to appropriate that money out of the lit.
So if we approve the docket tonight, it goes through, then we can come back, you're saying we're gonna come back next meeting and do it?
No, you can vote the docket down and, uh, let them come back with the where it should be out of the lit. Cause if we keep going like this, you know, that's why we have the lit fund on that safety funding mechanism. I don't think, I don't think that it's that crucial. We're not in the season yet, you know, to be running around the beach. But the whole thing of it is, is that the firemen use it, the policemen use it down there. And that also the lifeguards are employees of the fire department now. They're in that budget. They are, they are part of a safety network. Thank you.
Councilman President.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, and I have a comment that I'd like to make about this, uh, also because I called up, uh, Councilman Paul Preswalinski on the Finance Committee, and I appreciate the fact that it was taken to the Finance Committee to talk about. But that's why the lid tax, and we all know why the lid tax was put in. It's for safety equipment, both with the Police Department and Party Department. Now that was put in, we voted on that, I believe, late last fall, or it was last fall that we approved that. And even if we're saying, you know, and I've heard the discussion, well, you know, it was in, it was in the budget already, the general budget for 2023, so let's just pay it out of the budget for 2023. Well, in my mind, this should come out of the lid tax. So you take 35,000 out of the lid tax and whatever was appropriated for the general fund of $35,000 for 2023, just put that back into the general fund and let you use it for something else. That's the whole purpose of this lid tax is to use it for that. And I don't think that this should be approved tonight, and I'm not gonna vote for it. Uh, they can come back, the controller can come back next, uh, meeting with a appropriation for lid tax money to pay for this bill of $35,000. Thank you.
I, I do have a question, that's, if, if I may.
Yes, but, uh, Councilman.
So, are we saying then that we should go back and identify all the things that we, um, have in the budget that we approved and, and maybe do an appropriation for each of those items, so that we don't do it every time? For the length, I mean, I guess, I mean, I understand, I understand the, the, the reason for it. But I, I just, from a perspective from the controller, um, is that what would be happening? We would come back from appropriation each time? Or is there a way to identify all those things that we would want out of the lit and do it one time, maybe? I'm just trying to figure out, um, instead of, cause we're gonna have dockets all the time for different things like this, so. Because I, I agree with what you're saying. I just wanna know, from a, um, process perspective for the Controller's Office, what would that look like? Do we do something monthly? Quarterly? I mean, you know what's in the budget.
Yvonne Hoffmaster, uh, City Controller. Um, as I told the Finance Committee, um, it's the council's prerogative to deobligate the Riverboat Fund. These are not general fund, this is not the general fund, we're talking about the Riverboat Fund. So just to clarify, because they are two totally separate things. But the council can deobligate the Riverboat, and we would have to additionally appropriate, both of those would take three readings.
Controller Hoffmaster, is it, I think the question was, is it possible to do it in one swoop, or are we gonna have to do it each and every time something comes up that we were, uh, already obligated out of the Riverboat, or?
Well, the Riverboats for 2023 that the council passed in October of last year, for the Fire Department, it had the Polaris, which is, um, I don't know if it's a UTV or a Wave Runner, whatever that is. It had that and a lifeguard truck that the council approved in the Riverboat budget. The Police Department has $490,000 in police vehicles, plus 30, I believe it was approximately 30 some thousand dollars for glocks and safety equipment, which the, the dash mounted radar units, which is the invoice that was submitted to you earlier, is part of that $30,000. So those are the only things in the Riverboat. So the council, it would be their prerogative to deobligate those funds from the Riverboat, and we would additionally appropriate those funds in the public safety lit.
Thank you, Controller Hoffmaster. Very much discussion on this. Uh, Councilwoman Deitch. Or Councilman Preswalinski.
To, uh, talk about the, uh, the obligation of the Riverboat Funds, that's one way to do it, but I think that you just can't do that across the board. You know, you gotta look at what's in the Police Department, what's in the Fire Department. It's a set, each one is separate entities, and that we, uh, with that legislation that's, uh, in front of us tonight, I think it can be identified in, in a workshop setup that we look at it and, uh, what we have to do and where we're going with the lit money. And, and be, you know, down, down the road, I think you just can't deobligate all the money in all the funds. You have to identify that money, so we're gonna have to work with the Controller's Office to get that done.
Councilman Dabney. Uh, would this push the timetable back in terms of ordering this uh, vehicle, or are we okay with that? If we push this back, we go three readings, six weeks? Um, is that gonna hurt in terms of ordering the timing of this, with the, getting this vehicle or anything like that? Just a quick question. But they know what anybody?
These are the invoices that were submitted to the Finance Committee. So this equipment has already been purchased.
Okay.
So if we're going to have to additionally appropriate the money to be able to release these checks, we'll notify the vendors and tell them it'll be an additional six weeks before we pay the invoices.
And we'll be late. Awesome.
Thank you, Controller Hoffmaster, Councilman Dabney. Uh, is there any more discussion on this? Are we, uh, making a motion?
May, I'm making a motion to, uh, not approve the, uh, docket and that the, uh, Controller's Office comes back to us with a, uh, appropriation ordinance out of the lit money.
So, okay. We have a motion by Councilman Paul Preswalinski and seconded by Councilman Don Preswalinski. Um, Ms. Nyelup on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Nay.
Mr. Matt.
Nay.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Nay.
Ms. Jacobs.
Nay.
Uh, Mr. Paul Preswalinski.
Nay.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have two in favor and seven opposed.
I won't.
Oh. Uh, I, I wanna reconsider my vote.
I just think you confused.
A little bit, yeah.
So how, we need to take the moment. There would have to be a motion. If you wanted to, to do that again, you would have to make a motion to reconsider, and we would have to go through that process again.
Okay.
Get the support.
Okay.
On the motion to reconsider.
I, I like to ma, make a motion to reconsider the vote on that.
Second.
We have a motion to reconsider by Councilman Paul Preswalinski and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. Ms. Nyelup on the roll call, please.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Nay.
Mr. Matt.
Bye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
That's not considered.
Yes, they're getting it.
This is the vote now is just to allow the reconsideration, so we can vote. This is just the sweep. Okay.
You can continue, Ms. Clark.
Okay, are we ready, guys?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Don Preswalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski.
Aye.
And, uh, Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Nay. I don't. Same here.
Seven in favor and two opposed.
Voting the rebook.
Now we're gonna do another motion.
Yes.
Is there a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we do not approve the, uh, docket, claim docket, at this time, and that the controller come back with a appropriation ordinance out of lit money for the, uh, uh, claims docket of tonight, $34,520.46.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Preswalinski.
And I'm a second by Councilman Preswalinski.
Can I make a comment?
Uh, yeah, real quick.
So we're, we're voting, we're gonna push back, we're gonna have our Controller's Office tell people with somebody we've already purchased that we got an invoice for and call them back and tell them, we can't pay you for six weeks. That's bad business as a city.
I'm pretty sure that's what we do.
That's bad business.
Mr. President, am I comment?
Councilman, uh, you have point of order.
Yeah, that, I, I hear what the, uh, City Controller said, that we're pushing this back six weeks. We're not pushing this back six weeks, we're pushing it back two weeks. That's all we're doing here. She's gonna come to the next meeting. You're gonna come to the next meeting with the appropriation that we go ahead and vote on it.
Thirty minutes.
Okay, I, I, so, okay, I see, I understand what you're saying. But it's not bad business practice. In my mind, it should have been done this way in the first place. It should have came out of the lit. We all know what the purpose of the lit tax was for, that's why we voted for it.
I don't, I don't think the lit existed when we did the budget.
You didn't know that, no.
But it, it, it does now.
It does now.
It does now. Yeah, I'm not living in the past, I'm living in the, in the world we're in.
Uh, Ms., we have a motion and a second, Ms. Nyelup on the vote, please.
Mr. Matt.
Nay.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Nay.
Ms. Jacobs.
Nay.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
What are we voting on now? The now.
Nay.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Nay.
We have four in favor and five opposed.
That means we're gonna pay the bill, right?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, uh, reports from Boards and Commissions. We have Shannon Easton representing, uh, Michigan City Art Committee. With the annual report.
Before she starts, we're gonna get kind of about Boards and Commissions real quick.
Okay.
Uh, before they get started, um, I wanna, uh, let the public know that the, uh, Women's Commission will be at the next council meeting. Um, that's, that's my, uh, assignment to let you know, um, that they, they have to present this month.
For the annual report?
Yes.
Thank you for that update. Go ahead, Mrs.
Good evening, Council, I'm Shannon Easton, Treasurer of the Public Art Committee. We have Carol Anne Brown, these are all committee members, um, Dale Cooper, Janet Black, and Judy Jacoby here tonight to present our 2022 Annual Report. Next slide, please. The Public Art Committee was established by ordinance by this council in 2011. We have, um, 11 voting members that sit on the committee, they're listed there, I'm not gonna read through all of these slides. But our mission, oh, that's fine. Quickly, I'll read, um. Our mission is to create a community identity through public art that celebrates our unique historical, cultural, and natural resources. In 2022, we awarded eight children's scholarships, um, that were valued at $1,000. The children's scholarships, um, can be used for many different art forms at many different, um, studios in Michigan City. The majority have been through the Ludbusnick, uh, Art Center, but we've had glass blowing scholarships and the like. So that's an important part of our work. In 2022, we featured 11 sculptures in our Sculpt Fusion Program. Sculpt Fusion is a rotating program in the Uptown Arts District. We replace sculptures every two to three years to keep the program fresh. Um, so this year we displayed 11 of those. Next slide, please. We also got through, three new sculptures added to the rotating exhibit this year. Lady with a Hat and Uplift by Terry Karpowitz and Peace Tree by Nicole Beck. To celebrate the new pieces, we held an artist's reception at Agave Mansions in August. Next slide, please. We also have a permanent art collection, um, that's pretty substantial right now. So the sculptures there are listed, in total, um, bless you.
Bless you.
Our, our permanent, uh, sculptures are valued at $365,000. In addition to that, we exhibited leased sculptures in the amount of $352,000. So we were close to three quarters of a million dollars of exhibited artwork in 2022, which is quite substantial for a city of our size. And these are some photos of the permanent pieces that you will see around the city. Some were purchased, some have been donated. And Mickey Neck, um, is a Native American turtle that you can find outside of City Hall. It was unveiled in October of this year, it was made by a Native, Native American artist, um. This project took a couple of years, we had actually written a grant for a, a very sizable Native American piece. The grant wasn't awarded, and since then, that particular grant has gone away, but it's still our vision and goal that if we find another appropriate grant that we would pursue this larger piece, it was in excess of $100,000 and 16 feet tall, it was quite substantial. Um, but in the meantime, we did add the smaller piece to our collection. Next slide, please. Oops, one back. Other items in our permanent collection include the 11 historic photographs that you see on the walls here at the council chambers. Um, the three panel painting called Painted Lakeshore by Emily Beadle is in the upstairs of the lobby of City Hall. I'm gonna let Dale Cooper talk about the art kiosk, it was donated to us by Horizon Bank in 2011, and Dale has really taken that on as her pet project. Um, she changes it up and she can tell you what's in store for 2023. So we do change it every two to three years, and, um, we are going to put, um, there are six panels out there, and we're going to put Naomi Anderson, uh, because we have that beautiful sculpture there by Bernard Williams. So we thought it would be fitting to put information about Naomi Anderson, so you can read exactly that she came from Michigan City, and about, um, her life on all of the panels, so that's what's going in there next. We also have, um, a self-guided art tour called Autocast that you can download onto a smartphone. It will show you the locations and photos of all of our artwork throughout the city, and it also has, um, the artist telling you a little bit about the piece. This has been a very successful program, um, for us, and actually got more successful during the pandemic when people were outside trying to find things to do, so. Our financial report, um, we started the year with a budget of $22,770, and we ended the budget year with 93 cents. We also have a non-reverting fund for our gifts and donations, this is what we fund our scholarship, uh, program with. We ended the year with $1,471.63. And for those who don't know what a non-reverting fund is, that money does not revert back to the city. Um, it's more like a checking account, so we'll be able to use that again this year. And then I'm gonna let a couple of members that have been on the committee longer than I have go over a couple of our past project highlights, just to show a little bit of diversity, we're not just all about sculptures. You want?
Okay.
Thank you so much, thank you so much for having us tonight, and we did wanna come out and show, um, we're really dedicated to this program and grateful to the city for helping us put art in neighborhoods and downtown. Um, past projects include a humane, uh, the Humane Society did banners up and down Washington Boulevard, and I think some are, were Franklin Street as well. Um, the Naomi Anderson Project, which, um, Dale mentioned, is in Westcott Park. It's a beautiful, uh, engaging group of sculptures that, um, pay tribute to Naomi Anderson, who was native to Michigan City, she was one of three black families that lived here at the time. Um, and she was a renowned feminist who spoke in the first wave of feminism in the, uh, and helped women get the boat. Um, the Steamroller Art Festival was, I don't know how, 2014, I think, and we actually, um, it was more of an, um, experience, we actually had, um, nine artists who, that, that carved these gigantic, um, wood blocks, and we had a steamroller print. We inked us, we inked the blocks and actually needed a steamroller to print them, because that's how large the blocks were, it was a really fun event. Um, the Agro Sculpture are the sculptures that you might be familiar with in, um, in the farmer's market, and, um, those were, uh, made out of, um, kind of paying tribute to our rural roots, and they were all made from, uh, agricultural, um, implements that are used. And the Fish Board Photo Opportunity is something that they still put out, right? During the festivals and so forth. Um, you're all familiar with the You Are Beautiful, uh, sign, which really attracts people. I don't know what's exactly gonna happen on that site, but we have found another appropriate place that we think is a great gateway, coming from, uh, the west, the west down 12 by the Nippsco Towers, so we're hoping to relocate. Um, and then some of the future goals.
Judy.
Judy Stewart.
I didn't know. Future goals for us.
Yes, well, we are very goal-oriented, and in the last 12 years, um, we have set our goals uh, through a very well-considered long-range report. And then, of course, we take our goals and we try to, um, implement them. We have, uh, now, uh, developed our project goals for 2023. Uh, we're looking at something called Percent for Art Programs. The majority of states in America have Percent for Art Programs. Many cities do, in fact, Bloomington, Indianapolis, Decatur, Evansville. We wanna be one of the next programs that makes its way through the support of all of you to put a percentage for art projects in the budget of private and public developments. Now, we've already done this once with the two beautiful sculptures on Wabash. This was done voluntarily by the civil engineering firm who got the contract to do it. We have two beautiful sculptures because of that, we're gonna work on that, we've done a tremendous amount of research, wanna bring you all into the, the picture, so you understand. Um, we are also committed to bringing public art to our neighborhoods and our community. Obviously, we started.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Obviously, we started with the, um, art district, because that was a place where we could focus on developing a corridor of creativity. And now we are going to put artwork in the, uh, mediums of murals, perhaps some sculptures, earthworks, environmentally interesting pieces and concepts that will bring art to children, adults, people of all ages, to parks. Parks are places where we all love to gather. No matter where you live, you wanna gather someplace, especially in the good weather. And we want our children and our communities, our neighborhoods, to have to have wonderful exposure to art for our enjoyment, for our edification, and for our health, inside and out. So we hope that you will come together with us. We could not do what we've done in the last twelve years without all working together because. Right.
Thank you. We love you guys.
These are, I've hired these people to come in and be my fans.
Yeah.
Thank you. In all the years that we've all worked on community development, we have divergent views. We have diverse ideas and goals. But one goal I think we all share is that we want the place we live to be more beautiful, to be engaging. And this is all part of that goal. So let's keep working together and make it happen. Thank you.
And just a quick update on our two thousand and twenty-three goals for neighborhood art. We recently submitted an Indiana Art Activation Grant application for ten thousand dollars to do the mural that's shown here at Canada Park. That's not the actual mural. That was just kind of a placeholder. But it's an artist that Janet's worked with. His work is amazing. We have rendering. So if we are successful with that grant, we will get a mural on that entire wall at no cost to the city. So that's great news. I'm meeting with the Walker Street Community Garden next week to discuss bringing some type of artwork into the gardens. We're not quite sure if it's going to be a mural, sculpture, site furnishings. So that's in the works right now. We're also looking at painting the ramps at the skate park on the facings that face Highway Twelve. So visitors coming into the city will have some vibrant artwork to look at. So that could be really in the near future as well. Water Tower Park, we're working on a three-quarter of a million dollar playground renovation project. And there will definitely be a substantial piece of art at the gateway to the new park when it's unveiled. So those four are moving along very quickly. And we intend to continue to reach out into our neighborhoods aggressively this year and then for years to come. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
And I just want to say, one recent study from the Indiana Arts Commission that they did during COVID was that people move to cities. People used to move to cities to be where, near where they work. And all of the recent data says that people move to cities because they like the amenities that we can offer, including the beautification amenities. And so it really is an economic driver to invest this way. And we hope that we also want to be inclusive of all neighborhoods. So I just want to mention that.
Thank you ladies very much. Definitely appreciate the work you do. Myself noticed all of the artwork around the city and can't wait to see it in the rest of the neighborhoods as well. So that's definitely something I'm looking forward to. So we have many questions.
Mr. President, thank you. I don't have any questions. I just have some comments of this. Wonderful group. I'm the liaison from the city council to the arts commission. And I have learned a great deal from this group. And I can tell you to all the citizens of Michigan City how hard this group works. They're not all here today, but I would like to recognize Carol and Dale and Shannon for all her grant writing and leadership work and all the work behind the scenes. And Janet and Judy. And yeah, you guys do a fantastic job. You are making, although I'm a voting member, you guys carry the load. And we're making Michigan City beautiful, one sculpture at a time, one mural at a time, whatever it takes. We're going to get there. We're going to get that one percent donation to the arts commission through the building and everything else that we're going to be doing. But I just want to thank the group for all the hard work they do. And I want everybody in the audience, and I want everybody on the city council, give this group a round of applause for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Deitch.
And and let me add to, oh, you don't have to say, but you can. Just add to, and I know that Janet knows this. You know, every, every place that we've seen, and I send her text messages and pictures every time I go somewhere. Every revitalization has art and it's just baked into it. Some new grocery stores, there were some new clinics in every single location. And every time I go somewhere, I'm like texting her these pictures because she's been doing this with the Lubbock Center and with the churches. And I think it's a wonderful thing. I know we're targeting the west side. I'm still rooting for the east side too, but we'll get there. But I know that art is, is going to be, you know, very important as we do these developments and also making sure that these developers set aside money. I know a trip that myself and the mayor went on the year before last for the You Are Beautiful site. The actual development used all local artisans for, in the hotel, in the hotel. They used local artisans for all of the work, the artwork. They even built a bar on the inside. And it was just beautiful work. So I hope that's what we continue to do here in Michigan City. So thank you all.
Thank you.
If we know of public buildings, part of the reason Lubbock Center does things on their own is because we can work with non-public. We can work with churches and with other owned properties. So just for everybody to keep their eyes for, you know, grants that are, that sound appropriate, we will help push them through and work on those. But, you know, honestly, our capacity is pretty much limited only by money. So just keep it in mind, okay?
Thank you, Councilman President.
I have a question. I'll direct it to Shannon. Are there any immediate plans to do anything in the Midtown District? And Midtown is like.
As far as sculptures.
Or anything.
Not in the immediate future now.
Okay, well.
I mean, we did put one sculpture last year. One of the new pieces I showed you is right by the tennis courts in front of the YMCA. So that's, yeah, somewhat Midtown, but we are, we're trying to branch out. It's a big city when you start looking at placing artwork and trying to hit the neighborhoods. And one thing we forgot to mention is in June, we have a substantial sculpture being donated to the city. It weighs two and a half tons. We are looking for placement. The donor is going to place it for the city one time at their cost. So keep a lookout. There's something exciting coming down the pipeline in June.
What's the footprint of that?
Yeah, what's the footprint? That's, that's what I was going to ask.
I was going to say it's.
Stand alone.
Ten by six. And probably twelve or thirteen feet tall. Don't want to give away the surprise. You'll see it when we, when we place it, you'll see it.
Thinking of placement. But thank you, Shannon, for all the hard work you do.
Thank you.
Hey, are there any other reports of boards and commissions? Okay, reports of special and select committees? Reports from the mayor and other city officers and departments?
Thank you, Mr. President. One item I'd like to mention. Had the motion by Councilman Priszbalinski not to pay that invoice had been approved. Controller Hoffmaster, was we have, that would not have been paid in the thirty-day cycle. Would we have incurred a penalty for late payment, an interest or a flat penalty? Okay. I think that needs to be kept in mind in the future on things like that because I don't want Michigan City to be known as a community that doesn't pay its bills.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett.
Council President, council members, good evening. Double-O, Michigan City Fire Department. I will go through an incident breakdown real quick for the month of February two thousand and twenty-three. Five fires, two hundred and seventy rescue slash emergency medical calls, three hazardous conditions, four service calls, forty good intent calls, four false alarms and false calls. And we've used five Narcan on calls in just the city of Michigan City this, through the month. Right now, we have three probationary firefighters at the MAC Career Academy right now. We've gotten a response from them. They've been there four weeks now. Everything's going well. They seem to enjoy it, they said. Everything looks good with those three. I have four, sorry. I have four applicants right now that are in the process of being hired. They went through Public Safety Medical and the local pension board. And I'm just waiting on the Indiana Retirement to give me an authorization to hire them. So we'll have four more here pretty soon. I expect return on that any day. It should be happening fairly soon. I'd also like to remind you, I know you're going to be reading in a little while the criteria for utilization of the Public Safety Lip Funds. I know I gave you some information a while back. You asked about why firefighters were leaving the fire department. I did some research, I believe, for the last fifteen years. I stated that seven firefighters left to go to other departments for higher, higher pay. So I just want to remind you of that. Myself, the administration and the firefighters have all talked and we believe that some of that money should be used for, you know, raising the salary. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Legault.
Chief Legault. And as far as the hiring list, because I know at our Fire Mayor Commission meeting, we talked about some people leaving. Do you have anything else to add to that?
I have, yes. If anybody's interested, please put your application in. We have, we're down to number two on our list, I believe. We will be doing a hiring, I'm sorry, a. Yeah, the hiring procedure will start again. The American Commission cut off the deadline of April thirtieth to get your application in. So please get your applications in. We will need people by midsummer, probably. We have more retirees coming, projected retirees. So yes, thank you.
Quick question.
Yes.
And definitely, Councilman President, I can.
Yeah, quick question. We, we hear about the reasons why the firemen, police officers both are leaving. And I brought up something before, stay interviews, what are called stay interviews. Why don't we talk to the people that have been here fifteen, twenty years and ask them, why are they staying? What, you know, what, what's keeping people around? We, we hear why everybody leaves, but there are some people that actually stay. What are, you know, what are the good things that we're doing or that the departments are doing that make them stay? I'd like to hear that side of it, too.
Okay, I will do some research on that and talk to them.
Yeah, chief, well, question. So with the three probationary firefighters now and the four applicants, what does that bring your fire department up to? And what's the minimum number that you need?
We have, we're, we're, we have eighty-one firefighters. With those four, once I get them authorization and get them through the oath and, and get them on the department, we'll be at eighty-one. But I have a projected, another retiree coming at the end of the month. We have two or three, I believe, in June. So we're going to go through the other two people on our hiring list. We have three people on it right now. I have a projected firefighter leaving at the end of this month. So that'll put us down to two. So we're going to have to start the process for another hiring list.
Okay, so going back to my question.
I'm sorry.
Is your minimum manning requirement that you need?
We have minimum manning per shift is eighteen.
No, I mean, the fire department, not.
Eighty-one, I'm scheduled for eighty-one firefighters.
Okay, how many do you have right now?
Well, we're four short.
Okay, so you have seventy-seven.
Yep.
All right.
I have three at the academy.
You have three probationary officers. So once they're done, that brings you up to eighty. Then you have four applicants that are in, being looked at right now. So once one of those gets hired, then you'll be back up to your manning level of eighty-one.
I'm four short right now.
Right.
Okay.
Your minimum manning is eighty-one.
Yes.
Okay.
So when I get those four, I'll be back to eighty-one.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. That's what, well, well, after you get.
The recruiter's already hired. The three, the three, probationary firefighters are already hired.
Okay.
They're down to the academy, they're on the fire department.
Okay. So they're already hired. The other four will bring you back up to eighty.
Correct.
Then, okay, then you'll have one retire here, you got one retire there, which you have all the time anyway.
Correct.
Yeah, that's our normal.
The problem right now is our hiring list is down to two or three people.
Okay.
And once we run out of them, then we need more people.
Okay, but I mean, that's.
I'm going to need more. Yeah.
That's a department running department in the, in the job.
Yes.
People come, people go.
Yes, correct.
But it's not as bleak as maybe some people want to think it is. The manning level.
No, correct. We, we pay overtime if we need to. We, we keep the manning, manning where it needs to be. Eighteen manning, minimum manning per shift.
Yeah, I'm talking about overall for the whole department. I'm talking the overall number for the department.
Correct. We're, we're maintained, but we've never had this low of people on our hiring list before. We used to have, we used to have thirty, forty people at least on the hiring list that passed, you know, that passed everything. We used to get one hundred to two hundred applicants. This last time, I believe, don't hold me to the exact numbers. I think we had thirty-nine people apply. Twenty-three to twenty-four came to take the written test. We ended up with eleven, I think, on our list. And we're down to number three, I think. Okay, so we need to raise those numbers up. Okay. And when people look at fire departments to apply at, they look at the salaries, they look at everything. So.
Good, thank you.
Anything else? Going once, going twice.
Thank you, Chief Legault. Chief Booker.
Good evening, Council President, council members. Again, Chief Booker of Michigan City Police Department. I just wanted to give a little update, what's going on around the police department. Recently, we did a testing or applicant testing in January, which resulted in, I believe it was eleven applicants that had passed our written test, physical agility test. Of those eleven applicants, four have passed the background investigation and have been given conditional offers. Total of that day of that testing was seventeen. So we basically, we had seventeen applicants show up for that day. So we have four of which we have conditionally offered to go down to perf for a physical and psychological exam. Pending the results there, we could be hiring those four on that. We did just recently lose one more officer to another agency. Officer Renean Lozano left Michigan City Police Department, went to Chesterton. We conducted an exit interview with him. Some of the things he noted was that it was closer to home, you know, for him. The twelve-hour shifts that they, that they are on offers more time off, more three-day weekends and obviously more money. When I look at the numbers with Chesterton, what he explained to us with the four years of experience, he will be at seventy thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Currently at the Michigan City Police Department, to reach seventy thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, you have to be a twenty-year patrolman to reach that number. So let that sink in for a moment there. Okay, we talk about numbers. We're currently fifteen officers short. Hopefully, these four do pan out at the physical and psychological, you know, so we can get them in. But when I look at LaPorte Police Department, again, I've already indicated it. They have already given a raise with the Public Safety Lit Tax money they received. Currently at three years on LaPorte Police Department, they're at sixty-eight thousand dollars. Three years at the Michigan City Police Department currently, fifty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars. That's a fourteen thousand dollar difference. If you've been following our social media lately, you've been seeing plenty of ads. We've been doing a stronghold since I took this position on recruiting. It is my goal by the end of the year to fill, to make us, to get us. Um it is my goal by the end of the year to fill, to make us, to get us the full staff at eighty-four officers. Um we'll be talking here shortly about the annexation, expanding the city. Eventually, we're going to have to have more police coverage as well. Um. We had seventeen applicants, four passed, and and they still have to pass the psychological and the physical examinations. And we're, we're behind. So again, you know, I I I plead with you to uh help expedite this process um because we are behind the game. We are a training ground for other departments. We are investing thousands of dollars in two officers, and they are leaving us. And we are starting over. So please, if we wanna sit down, we have all these numbers broken down. Um just real quick, I have a quick breakdown. We talked about, uh we had a workshop not too long ago about officers that had left our department. So since twenty fifteen, we've had a total of seventy-four officers leave Michigan City Police Department. Twenty-two of those uh were planned retirements, uh fourteen were unplanned retirements, twenty-three left for other departments. Of that, since twenty nineteen, twenty-two of them have left since twenty nineteen for other police departments. One left in twenty fifteen. So um we had two that had left for other careers, and then thirteen resignations. So, um. Again, I'm just asking that we get on par with our neighboring communities um to make this a place where people wanna come, come, they wanna stay, they wanna grow, they wanna develop their uh career here and stay here and uh and grow with this city as as much, I mean, we're gonna grow exponentially here in the next five to ten years, so. Again, uh thank you for your time, and be willing to answer any questions of that again at this time.
Uh thank you, Chief Walker. Um one question that I have, um with the salary discrepancy, is that the main driver, um when you look at benefits packages and other uh perks of working for Michigan City, is it?
So this is just baseline uh plus long longevity.
Okay.
So that's baseline plus longevity is all the, all that we're looking at. We're not looking at shift differentials, uh benefits packages or anything like that. Baseline, they, just those numbers I gave were first-class patrol numbers.
So just take home pay.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief Walker? Uh thank you for all that data, it's definitely very.
Thank you.
You have reports of uh city officers. Uh is Nylet in?
There are no petitions this evening. And there is no communications that we received. A resolution by title only approving and authorizing the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and LaPorte County Board of Commissioners regarding repairs to the Liberty Trail Bridge performed in conjunction with the Phase Three of the City saying Singing Sands Trail, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
A comment I have is uh, this is why Shannon stayed close here to to come up and explain this uh in better detail.
Good evening again, I'm switching hats, Shannon Easton, Assistant Park Superintendent. This um local bridge agreement came about because we are planning Phase Three of the Singing Sands Trail. Um it terminates now on Liberty Trail. Phase Three will pick up at that termini, cross Liberty Trail, and then across the street, bridge that crosses Trail Creek. Uh we met with the county two years ago to go over the plans for the trail to be alongside the bridge, alongside the traffic. Um we asked them at that time to do some repair work. It wasn't really on their bridge repair schedule yet. Um but what would happen if we don't work together is if we put the trail through, and in two years they need to repair these approaches, the trail has to come out, and the county's gonna, in essence, have to pay to rebuild that part, so county taxpayers are paying it for twice. So we'd like to work together. I already have an open contract for um design and engineering. So what this agreement lays out is Michigan City will pay the nineteen thousand dollars to design the county bridge work that needs to be done. The county will repay the city back the nineteen thousand. That keeps them from having to go out and do the whole hiring process of an engineering firm, so it expedites our project. Um. And then because of this is part of a trail project that we're trying to expedite, uh Northwestern Indiana Regional Planning Commission has uh found federal highway dollars to pay for eighty percent of the county's construction on the bridge. So it's really a win-win for everyone, um especially the taxpayers who get both projects done. Um not for free, you know, we pay the twenty percent, but uh at a much lower cost. So this interlocal agreement just spells that out, that Michigan City will pay upfront, and the county will pay us back.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
My apologies.
Yes.
Uh Councilman Don Presleski would like to be added as a sponsor.
I would, I would like to be added as well.
Councilwoman Deitch, Councilman President.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor also, and then I have a comment.
Can we ask if anyone else wants to be added, because then we can get the sign.
Sure.
Councilman President.
Um I would like to ask Shannon if she could explain exactly what's happening to the bridge. I I spent some time with her today uh to get some questions answered, and I I think it would be very helpful for the council and the general public on what's going on here.
So for those who are familiar with the bridge, um it's very wide. It has uh a single traffic lane going in each direction. The trail will be located on the east side of the bridge. There'll be a concrete barrier between the traffic lane and the um trail itself. The concrete side of the bridge will have to have uh railings put up to meet end-out specifications. So in essence, we're just making a shared roadway on that bridge. Two lanes of traffic will remain. Uh the trail will be, I believe it's twelve-foot, which is fairly wide for going over a bridge. Um so it'll be a safe crossing. Um the county's portion of that, again, is replacing the concrete approach slabs that are coming up to the bridge decking itself. The decking's in uh really good condition right now. Um. So basically, that's it. We're just using that bridge to traverse Trail Creek with the Singing Sands Trail. Then it'll turn off and uh head through. It'll actually cross another bridge, a pedestrian bridge, and go through Friendship Gardens.
It is the uh, the the trail going around and through uh ne- next to uh Crigger Memorial, is that our, does the city own that access road? Are we still gonna have access to the uh back of the uh Friendship Gardens?
Yes.
In the creek area right there with people.
So it's a maintenance access road under the jurisdiction of the Parks Department. That road will remain. The section of road that's going to be shared as the trail will be kind of beefed up for our maintenance equipment. Um and the Parks Department is currently working with the DNR, who is taking over the Steel Header property that's right across the maintenance road from Memorial.
Mm-hmm.
Also, we're working on granting them a access easement, and they'll be opening a new public access fishing spot, which is great, right along the trail.
Very good.
More exciting than that, it'll be a stocking area for the creek, so if you wanna come see sixty thousand fingerlings get dumped into Trail Creek, that would be the access spot, so that's kind of cool. So yes, the road will be maintained.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the council? Uh I'd have one, I guess. We did public, yeah, public was closed. Um what, is there a, I don't know how long the project has been going on, Singing Sands project in total, or what's the total amount that has been spent to get us to where we are now? Is there, do you have that, or?
I don't have it um with me right now, but I do have it spreadsheeted out, yes. So the first grant was awarded to the city in two thousand and three. That was Phase One, which took, and Phase One is just closing out now, so that took twenty years to build. Phase Two took less than two years. Um. One portion of segment or Phase Three, one segment has already been constructed and opened last year. So in total, we'll have nine miles of trail. Off the top of my head, I don't have the number, what it's going to cost us exactly. What we have remaining, though, is eight and a half million dollars of uh trail project to construct. Um a big majority of that is being paid through state funding and federal highway funding. And I'm also applying for the grant to offset the match that the uh council's already committed to. Um so hopefully, within the next two years, Singing Sands is done, but yeah, it's been a long journey. Phase One has.
Thank you, Ms. Easton.
Uh but I'd be glad to forward the uh total costs to the council.
Sure, thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Any other comments from the council?
I move for adoption.
Second. Second. Over most approved by Councilwoman Deitch and second by Councilman Presleski. Uh Ms. Nylet on the vote, please.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presleski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presleski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Till, uh Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Matt?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylet. Yeah, uh my apologies, my mic was off, so, yes, uh real quick, uh I need to state your name and uh address for the record, please.
Uh Mark Kielinski, LaPorte County Councilman. Uh yeah, I apologize, I didn't hear you back there. Um it the uh, right now, there's no money that's allocated for this bridge, but I can find out what we can do about it. These are their taxpayer dollars, because all the money goes from from the, from the state, goes into the bridge fund. It doesn't go to, it's not in our general fund. So that money's allocated somewhat per year, and that money's been allocated so far. I'll see if I can appropriate that money towards this project. But as of right now, it's because the bridge decking's okay, it's not part of our project to become the future right now. Um but I, I will work through the city council people, want to discuss it and be able to talk about it, and I'll see if I can help, because I'm on the highway bridge uh department on that anyway. So we have two, two different kind of bridge. We have the one for the Franco Street Bridge, and then the smaller bridges, so they're both allocated money that we get from the state to for these type of funds. Um but again, the decking is in good shape right now, so it hasn't been on our top of our list. I'll see what it's gonna take about getting moved up. That was it, I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you, Councilman. But any, any other missed comments from the public? Okay, thank you.
This working? No?
Yes.
Is it? Okay. Um on the Singing Sands.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian Brosay, thirty, West Sixth Street, Michigan City. On the Singing Sands Trail, on the west end of it, by Nipco, comes up to the Amtrak uh tracks. Are they ever gonna make a pedestrian walkway from the Nipco side to who I think the DNR building across the Amtrak tracks, or do we have to continue walking into US Highway Twelve to get from one part to the other?
Uh we'd have to research that. I don't think Ms. Easton remains, so.
And I understand that's uh Amtrak property, so, you know, it's probably something they have to do, I don't know. But tha- that's just a concern, because I'm up and down that part of it all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Nylet, can you read our next resolution by title only?
Okay, I believe that we're going to an ordinance. We are going to wait until after we have a formal public hearing to do the resolution.
I'm sorry.
Oh, we do have another one, don't we? No, we don't. We just have one, so I will go ahead and read ordinance on first reading.
Is that all with this resolution?
Yes, it was explaining that um we have to have um the formal public hearing on the annexation before we can um address this resolution.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Can you please read our first ordinance by title only?
Okay. An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation of the budget of the public safety and local income tax lit fund for the purchase of tough books for Michigan City Police Department, and this is introduced by Mr. Simmons.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, this is uh Michigan City Police Department requesting uh to purchase eight uh tough book, pan- Panasonic tough books for the department uh at a total cost of three hundred thousand dollars uh coming out of the lit fund uh per the control of the three hundred thousand dollar uh is in the fund. Any further uh information? Uh Chief Corley is here to answer those questions.
Thank you, Councilman Simmons. Were there any questions? Uh Councilwoman Tillman?
Um yes, thank you, uh Mr. President. Um yes. Um so in the ordinance, it's indicating uh it's for the purchase of eighty-four tough books, um totally three hundred thousand dollars, been on the finance committee. One, I'd first like to say thank you for actually utilizing what lit is for. Um the other thing is is there a need to do the eighty-four based off of how many vehicles you actually have um that's being utilized opposed to if they're not four eighty-four and purchasing that amount? And I understand it may be because we may get a better deal if you look at it in quantity, but if we're not gonna utilize the four eighty-four by purchase the four eighty-four and just get what we need for right now, and because we do have the lit, when, as you get those officers, then we purchase them as as you need them.
Okay, so uh so we're a lot of eighty-four officers, even though we don't have eighty-four officers, our plan is to have eighty-four officers. And again, if you purchase in a bundle, that you get more, actually opposed to purchase one by one, it's not like when you, when we purchase these um items, we can't just go to like Office Max and get one. It takes a while. And so we have eighty-four in hand, and we can use them as we need them opposed to order them piece by piece. Yeah, and it there, it's discounted. I mean, we will, as we hire officers, still, the computers will be there ready for them opposed to having to go order and wait for them to come, and now they don't have a computer.
And I hope that we, we get more recruits coming in, but just if not, did those just was it? I mean, the lifespan is usually about five years.
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh Councilwoman Deitch?
Yeah, I have a, so didn't, I know you did a presentation on this last year. Um so don't, aren't these compatible with all the new technology that you're using? Is that one of the reasons why we're moving to the tough books?
Yeah, plus they're more durable, and actually uh just, just not just the compatibility, but like I said, durable. Um and then they're, I guess, more efficient. And what we have now is what you'll have, your everyday run-of-the-mill laptop that you'll carry your in um at your workplace, opposed to the tough books, um what they can be doing in and out of the vehicle without uh shutting down a whole vehicle. Um the mount allows you to take it, take it out without having to turn it out and go in and lose connection um and so forth, so um it's more practical for us. A lot of police departments are using them, Macbeth and LaPorte County Sheriff's Department actually use tough books themselves. Um we also found in the department can be a little bit more efficient, where we can probably get rid of some of our uh desktops. Um in our report writing room, we actually have, I think, about six, seven desktops that we use. Well, now with the cradles, you just take a tough book from the car, put it in the cradle in the report writing room, opposed to having to have another computer uploaded and have a lot of stuff on it and so forth.
Councilwoman.
If I may. Um and this will also be compatible for the flocking rate, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Walker. Um. Councilman President.
Yes, uh I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor on this, and uh the uh, wha- what's the outlay on when when you will receive the total order, or is it gonna be? The uh, wha- what's the outlay on when, when you will receive the total order, or is it gonna be piecemeal then?
No, we'll order them all at once, um, after, well, two or three readings, um, and then next we have to go to border works to get that approval, so. Um, as soon as we order them, they're, um, they're ready to come.
Okay.
So I would expect probably uh, to say we probably order by, what are we in, we're in March now, say maybe late April at the latest. And we'll have them here before the summer.
Uh, no. I do wanna say that uh. That this is exactly, you know, how the lit money is supposed to be used. And uh, I'm glad to see that we're do- we're doing it this way and hopefully that. Maybe we need to look at doing uh something in the ordinance to have monthly reports out of the controller's office on, on that, so. I wanna thank the uh department for doing it the correct way, so. You know, the money's there, the money's gonna be there mo- uh monthly, and we need to sit down at some point to have a workshop and look at the needs of the police and the fire department, so we can project uh, the monies that are gonna be needed and what kind of monies we need to put on uh, on, on the side to do uh further purchases. So I think that we all need to look at it that we need to share the resource and we need to do the best thing and efficiently as we can. So I just wanna say thank you for putting in underlit, thank you.
Councilman Don, President?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor also.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Deitch.
And the same, um, Angie Nelson Deitch.
Does anyone else wanna be added as a co-sponsor? Raise your hand, raise your hand, aye.
I got, I got a question.
Okay, we gotta go to the public.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any comments from the public?
Am I, don't name me or, I'm late for the public house, I'll sit right here.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman?
I want, uh, easy question, um, Chief Corley, what, what, uh. Can you give us a idea? Like when all our technology is gonna be in place and working? You know, like the shots fired and where, where this stuff is gonna happen?
So as you know, we have thirty block cameras, out of the thirty, we have about twenty that are in place. Um, and those twenty are in the city limits, I, the ten that we are waiting on were in, um. The s- uh, state, state highway areas, and so we had to wait for end dot permits, um, the permits have been finally pulled and approved. Now, the next thing is to actually get those in place, um, after that, uh, you're looking at here in the spring. Um, I know that uh Flock has already started with uh getting permits and looking at locations to put the gunshot detection. A little bit more complicated than the flock cameras, because there's so many sensors that have to go in so many areas, so now you have to get poles and you know, NipSCO pole, city pole, you know, those approvals, um, and, um, whatever technically we have, oh. Our body cameras and in-car cameras will be implemented here, uh, April tenth, they'll be here to start putting that in. We actually had it set for initially at the end of February, but due to us in-service training, because we had a lot of more training that has to go along with that, we didn't wanna put the two together because of manpower, and so we had to push that back a little bit, um, I think that's it, and then these laptops will be, um, here before the summer.
Are those gonna all be like? When those computers are on in the car, is that's gonna be like in there, the district is gonna? It's gonna fire off a message to their computers in the car, correct?
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman, any more comments from the council? Having none, this should be held for secondary, thank you, Chief Corley.
Thank you.
Ms. Nyla, can you please read our uh first ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by travel only, creating section two dash four one nine under Michigan City Municipal Code to establish criteria for utilization of public safety lit funds, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Paul, President Volinsky.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Yes, I move the table to our second meeting in April.
Second.
Over motion to table, uh, to our second meeting in April by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Paul, President Volinsky. Uh, Ms. Nyla, upon the vote, please.
Mr. Don, President Volinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul, President Volinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, this ordinance will be addressed in our second meeting in April. Uh, can you please read our next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, annexation of certain contiguous areas of real estate consisting of approximately thirty-two point eight six six acres located in the unincorporated La Porte County Cool Spring Township, Indiana South of Road, west four hundred north, west of County Road, north nine fifty west, north of east, west section of the North Brundage Road and of the north, south section of the North Brundage Road, and declaring this same area to be part of the incorporated jurisdiction and within the city limits of the city of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash four dash three. And this is introduced by Ms. uh Jagus and Ms. Deitch.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla, any comments from the sponsors?
Yes, I know that, um, last council meeting, we had, um, several questions that came up, um, you all should have received a, a memorandum. Um, a copy of a memorandum, um, in reference to the, um, annexation, um, by GLC, uh, Great Lakes Capital. Um, if there are any questions, I know that we have, um. Some people on the line and in the audience, if any questions remain, but, um, basically, um. It's a voluntary annexation, so whether it's through the council or on their own, um, it's just a formal proceeding for the annexation. This is totally separate from the discussion on TIF. Um, but again, as we've learned, um, with the last, um. Eight point five million we've had to deal with, uh, this is different, um. That, that particular annexation didn't have a project associated, this is a very specific project, which is different. Um, and there is, uh, sewer and, and water there. Uh, but this is just a formal proceeding to make sure that the, for the actual annexation. Um, any discussion after that as far as working with the county, that still has to happen, but it's, it's not a part of the annexation process, so. Um, I just wanted to make that, um, that statement in case when we get to council comments, if there are any questions, we do have some folks in the audience here.
Thank you, Councilwoman, any other comments from, uh, uh, comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Clavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, not, not seeing the parcel IDs on these, these properties, I believe this is gonna be on Zolinski's Farm, which is right across the street from, uh, the Walmart, um. I believe that I strongly feel that property is in the boundaries of the US four twenty-one, I ninety-four County TIF District. That's, you know, I really don't see how we can annex that in, you know, we still have to provide city services, no one, if anybody's gonna work there, we need to have a a stop for the Michigan City area transfers throughout two, three, and four, Route one doesn't go, go that far south, um. And I think the, I'm gonna go back to a project that was always discussed about maybe thirty years ago, I think it's kinda died. I think it would be a really big game changer for Michigan City. There used to be a third I ninety-four interchange off of County Line Road. If you got all that open land out there, that they could put all these type of factories and industry out there, I think that would be a the other thing, there, there should be a traffic signal light, County Line Road and US twenty, uh, you know, that, that, that's kind of a death rap there. Um, there, there's a third infrastructure project on the west side of Michigan City, there's, this is in the comprehensive plan to tie in Woodlawn Avenue with Garfield Street. You know, the only place where we can cross the tracks now is gonna be at, at, on the west side on the third floor, is it Sheridan, Grant, Willard, and Ohio. You know, if we connect those roads together, uh, we wouldn't have to go around Moore's Autobody and all that area, it would be a straight shot all the way from twelve to Ohio. It's just my comments on this, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clavich, and uh, this is our formal public hearing, so any other comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any other comments from the public?
Yeah. Trying to get my scoop started up.
Just somebody give him the mic.
In regards to the annexation?
Yeah, yeah, I apologize to you guys.
This concerning the car? So, uh, this concerning the crossings and the railroad cross tracks and stuff or?
No, this is uh in regards to the annexation on the south.
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other comments from the public? Okay, public comment is closed, comments from the council?
I, I do, yeah, so, um, and I don't know if someone will answer this, um, uh, being in the TIF, uh, that was one of the questions I asked, um. We did have a, a, a informal meeting earlier today, um, I asked about that particular property in that TIF, and I know that, um. The ori- there was an original TIF, and then there was an amendment to that TIF, which included this, so that, there was some things that happened. But the TIF has no bearing on the annexation, those are separate, and the attorneys can correct me if I'm wrong, um, in saying that.
You're not wrong, um, if there's some additional questions, Attorney Rags is on the Zoom from my office who was working on this, so if you want him to elaborate, he can do that.
Um, Attorney Rags, can you, uh, kind of elaborate on, um. That piece of it, um, annexation process versus, um, the TIF and how they're separate?
Absolutely, um, Councilwoman, uh. Although there may be a county TIF district located in this property, the statutes are very clear. For unincorporated property, especially a super voluntary, um, annexation. There is nothing that prevents this annexation from going forward. The only thing that would possibly prevent the annexation from going forward is if the county owned actual real property within the area to be annexed, this uh is not that situation, though. With the property looking to be annexed, it's all owned by a single landowner, that landowner has petitioned for this annexation, uh, it's a hundred percent of the land uh, within the annexation area, so the fact that it's in a TIF district does not matter for the purposes of the annexation.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I got a question, uh, for Attorney Rags. Uh, Attorney Rags, so will the city be liable for any expenditures regarding this annexation going forward, um, or uh, is it a, is it a situation where whatever the county has, uh, vested in this TIF, we would not be responsible for?
There, i- if I understand your question correctly, Councilman, if the county has certain infrastructure that has been purchased, that's in the TIF district, under certain conditions, the city would have to reimburse the county for that infrastructure, but I don't believe that any infrastructure that qualifies for that does exist.
Okay, uh, thank you, Attorney Rags, any other questions for, uh, Councilman, uh, Rags?
Oh, yes, uh. Attorney Rags, um, so. You're saying that the city sanitary department and the city water department own the lines and they put them in, right? And it's not, it, it's not connected with development from the TIF, uh, area, correct?
I- if I understand your question, if you're asking me if the city owns the infrastructure that is there. As I understand, uh, the infrastructure that's there is connected to, uh, city sanitary, and there is a, uh, petition in place. I can't say for sure. I, eh, upon re- upon reflection, I can't say for sure if the city owns the infrastructure, um, that's in the ground, I would have to check on that. I recall looking at the memo, and within the memo, it was not listed that there was county infrastructure.
Okay, well, well, so now. Are you saying that we have no liability to the TIF district that they established if this is annexed into the city of Michigan City? That?
I, I'm sorry, Council.
No.
Yep.
Well, is there any liability that the city will look at or face? Was through the tax draw or through any other means on paying the county money off of this development that'll, uh, go to the TIF district? If this is annexed into the city?
When you use the term liability, um.
I, I mean, in, in dollars, eh, from the, uh, tax, um, draws or liability from the TIF district, established TIF district out there.
The city would not be responsible to pay out anything to the county as it relates to uh, the annexation of this property, um, whether or not the assignment of the funds from this prop, from taxes on this property would go to the city or would go to the county is a separate question, but the city would not be responsible to pay the county anything based on the annexation.
Oh, okay, well. Then you're saying that this will nullify their TIF zone in that property? Is that what we're, is that what we're more or less looking at?
No, I'm not saying that it nullifies the TIF district, I'm saying that the city would not be responsible for paying the county, i- if I understood your question correctly, you were asking me if the city would face any liability.
Well, okay, I'll say this, i- is, is there gonna be any liability? Somehow, somewhere on, cause the way I understand TIF, that when it's developed, uh, uh, new tax money's gotta, has got to be, you know, a percentage goes into the, uh, TIF zone?
For, for new taxes that are developed in a TIF district, um, if the TIF district exists as a county TIF district and it's annexed within to a city. Then if there are any bond obligations that are being funded pursuant to certain taxes that are generated within that TIF district that are specifically called out for, then the county would still receive assignment of those tax funds until the obligation is paid off, but that is not a payment that the city makes uh, to the county, so the city wouldn't lose anything from its coffers to direct to the county because it annexed a portion of the TIF district.
So in, in essence, we wouldn't gain anything?
I wouldn't say that there wouldn't be any gains, um, again, it depends on whether or not there's a bond obligation and what exactly the bond obligation is tied to.
Well, there is. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry.
There is a bond obligation that we're aware of, it was a private placement bond, so we don't have access to it like we have access to for certain, uh, to go to certain public spaces to get a copy of bond instrument, we have requested it, uh, but it has not been provided at this time.
Okay, would that be at the, uh, County Redevelopment Commission didn't provide it?
Uh, we requested the, um. We requested it from sender and, uh, sender.
That bond is on that and it matures in twenty forty, I believe.
Yeah.
From what I'm looking at.
And we did request, we had a call earlier today, and we did request the information as well.
Well, can anybody tell me how much we're gonna gain off of this development, that's, that's a question that is in my mind?
If I can speak to that, I don't have the answer to your question, but the, the question that's really for us as the attorneys is related to the legalities of the annexation. And as Councilwoman Deitch indicated, that and the issue of the TIF are two different things. That's a question, the TIF is a question of, for municipal finance, right, and that's kind of beyond the scope of what we're doing. So we don't wanna not give you an answer, but, uh, that is a good question, it's a separate question, and it's a, the, the issue is entirely municipal finance with respect to the TIF. On the annexation, the legalities of it have been laid out pretty clearly, but I do understand your question, um, but until we get the bond, we won't know the particulars of when the city will reap the benefit from the annexation. Um, but until we get the bond, we won't know the particulars of when the city will reap the benefit from the annexation. That's the missing bit of information. Well, it's not real liability because the city's not cutting a check, so that's why Attorney Rags made that distinction of, well, it's not really liability, but. I, I think I like uh the way the councilman phrased it in saying that, well, when do we, you know, when do we benefit from it? And we won't know that unless, until we know.
Oh, okay, uh. Attorney Harris, uh, appreciate that, but then this document from S E H. Is referring to a, a bond on that uh. Uh, that matures in twenty forty and. The principal amount was for four million, I believe, four million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, you know, so. That, that obligation out there. So would it be correct to ask the question? What would be the liability for that particular partial? Is that the real question or one of the questions?
Not necessarily. I, I wouldn't use the term liability because the city's not on the hook for it, so I just don't wanna confuse people into thinking that. This annexation is gonna result in cutting a check to the county. But I still understand your point of when will we receive some benefit from doing it? I understand when the bond matures, but I don't know where we stand in terms of satisfying that bond. And we could either be on track for it to expire in twenty forty as stated, or we could have. We, we could be somewhere else in that schedule. I just don't have that info.
Okay. Alright, thank you. But are we working on trying to get this?
A meeting earlier today and we requested the information, but it was just as of today that we requested.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, uh, just clarification on this bond. That's come up for discussion now and it matures in twenty twenty, twenty forty for four million dollars. Is the county, so who's on the hook for this bond, pay this bond back?
I'll ask Attorney Rags to provide that detail. He was involved in the call that they had earlier.
It was a county bond issuance, so the county's on the hook to repay the bond.
Okay, and then the, and the other bond that was mentioned, I never heard of that bond before. It's called a private placement bond?
That, that's the same bond, the, the bond.
That's the same bond, okay.
Correct, it's a private placement bond as opposed to a public bond.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I got one more question. So just for my own clarity. The, the TIF is on the dirt, correct? Not what's above the dirt. So if we put something above the dirt and generate revenues from it. The revenues have to go to satisfy the bond that's outstanding with the county before we could receive any of those revenues.
In theory, yes.
In theory, so if it's a ten million dollar bond out, I think it says maybe four. Until that's satisfied or we come up with some agreement with the county, we don't receive any of those funds, so it's like. We don't cut a check, but we also don't receive a check.
Correct.
But we'll still have to provide services to the area that we annex because it's essentially Michigan City at that point.
Correct, the, the benefit is deferred, basically. It's a deferred benefit.
And then that information is pending?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Okay, this will be uh Councilman President.
Yeah, so Councilwoman Dyche, so this information that we're waiting on. From the, from this meeting that place today.
What question, you got a question or do you?
No, I'm just trying, so what is that information gonna provide? Is it gonna make anything better than what it is already?
No, so.
Seems to me like we're paying out to get something in the long run.
Not paying out anything.
Well, yeah, but we're not, the way I look at it, what we're paying out is we're not, correct me if I'm wrong. By, we have to get rid of this bond, okay?
I think it's a little bit more than the bond, so let me, let me say.
Okay, let me, let me finish my question, okay? Is that, i- i- we, we have to deal with this bond. And we're not gonna be making any property taxes, correct me if I'm wrong. The way I see it, we're not gonna be collecting property taxes off of this until this other liability is satisfied. Is that the way this is?
That's part, part of it and there's some other, um, there's some other benefits. That I can explain um directly to you, but let me say this.
And how much of property tax are we gonna be losing on a annual basis until this bond is paid off?
Uh, yeah, I don't have any of those.
Before I move forward, I gotta know what these numbers are.
And that's fine, we're on second reading. So we're on second reading for this, so let me say this about this particular annexation. So with the bond being outstanding, um, and once the annexation will go through. There is a process to deal with the TIF piece of it, the financing piece of it, that, that's a discussion with. And the county was on there this, today, was on the um actual um. Uh, call, but there are other taxes that we will receive, like the employment tax that goes into the lit. Will receive um the personal property, there's different things that we will receive. Off of the benefit of putting this new facility on that property. Just not the property tax, so we need to understand there are more benefits. Is the, the jobs that we receive, the employment tax that we receive, personal property tax that we receive. Um, different things that we can do, it's just not the property tax. And I think that's, we're stuck on that piece of it and also understand too. That even with that piece of property right now, I think they're generating only a thousand dollars a year from that parcel. Into their TIF to pay it back, that bond. It's not generating a whole lot of money. So those are the other things that aren't in this document that are a true factual statement. That we will get employment tax and other things from that property, so it's not like we're getting nothing. It's the benefit of having a new facility there, the benefit of the new employees that are there. Those are the things that we will receive as well. So I, I can have them draft something to talk about those things so that you know what those are as well. But we did, we request the information from, from sender and on the call today. We, we said we need that information so that we understand what's really there. And I'm not a financial expert, so I'm not gonna claim to be, but I just wanna tell you there are other benefits as well.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, but are we gonna get that information by the next council?
That's what I'm hoping for. If not, we just table it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any more comments from the council? Uh, this ordinance would be held for clear reading, um, new business.
I, I have a question. Can we do the resolution at the next meeting? Would, is, do we have to do it today?
It's on the, on the agenda. It's on the agenda, so you would need to make a motion to table.
Uh, that's what I'm saying, I can table it. Okay, I'll just move to table the, the resolution until the next meeting.
Support.
I have a motion to table by Councilwoman Dyche and second by Councilwoman Tillman. Ms. Nyla, go on and vote please.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jergis?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Hi.
Mrs., Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preswellinski?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, motion carries. Uh, new business. Uh, FYI, the mayor is requesting the advising consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointment of. Ms. Mercedes McMullin to the Michigan City Human Rights Commission replacing Ms. Melody Haynes. Who recently resigned. Term will begin immediately and expire of February second of twenty twenty-six. Is that one we need to vote on? Okay, is there a motion? We have a motion by Councilwoman, I mean Councilman Paul Preswellinski and second by Councilwoman Dyche. Ms. Nyla, go on and vote please.
Ms. Jergis?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinski?
Hi.
And Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Congratulations, Ms. Haynes. Uh, FYI, the Michigan City Common Council has one appointment to the Michigan City Enrichment Corporation's. Term expires March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, George Kuzmerchak.
Mr. President, just to make a comment, I spoke to uh Mr. Kuzmerchak. And uh, he's not gonna be seeking reelection to this post. Cause he has served three, three-year terms and I believe by the bylaws of the uh. Enrichment Corporation, uh, you can't serve anymore than three, three-year terms consecutively. So he's not gonna be seeking rea- reappoint, so the appointments are wide open.
Okay, do we have any applicants?
Yes, we, I have three of them. Um, Mr. Rodney McCormick, Ms. uh Pastor Dennis Carroll and Jason Kirby.
I have the last one.
Jason Kirby?
Uh, so are we accepting nominations this time or next week?
Next time.
Okay.
Can you, can you say those names again?
Um, Rodney McCormick, Pastor Dennis Carroll and Jason Kirby. And these were all um applications that I have received um in this last year.
Who's the last one?
Jason Kirby. And that's, um, we don't need to spell that. Uh, he turned this in January fifth, twenty twenty-two. So that one is no good, that expired.
Definitely, thank you. Unfinished Business. Nominations, the council has a following appointments to the Michigan City Social Status of African American Males. Term expired February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and our uh one-year terms. Resigned uh Ministerial Association, uh Linda Faye Conley and double A C P. Willie Millsap Swanson Center and the Wayard Michigan City Area Schools. Do we have any uh letters uh in regard to those appointments?
Yes, I did receive a letter from the N double A C P for uh Linda Faye Conley.
Okay.
I move that we um support uh Linda Faye Conley as the representative of, of the N double A C P.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilwoman uh Dyche and a second by Councilwoman Jigus. Ms. Nyla, go on and vote please.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
And Ms. Jergis?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one.
I, I do have a question. Who's responsible for following up with the organizations, um? I know Michigan City Area Schools, like I said, I forgot to, um. Um, they thought the appointment was through this year, not knowing it was gonna end in February. They thought it was, they were finishing a term and then renewing for the year, so is there an official letter that we need to send?
It doesn't come from the clerk's office, it comes from this uh.
From the commission?
From the commission.
Okay, so, okay. So the Swanson Center, M C A S and the Ministerial Association, okay, thank you.
Mr. President? Uh, I would like to, uh. The excuse from my chair to uh distribute some information to the council members. Uh, I have some business that needs to be dealt with at this meeting.
Pass them down.
Yeah. Oh, I gotta have some on this side. Three.
Uh, can we have uh comments from the public?
Um, I'm. I'm uh, I wanted to uh take care of this business under unfinished business, please. Okay, um. After uh, I wanna make some comments here right now, but not under council comments, this is an old bu- uh, old business. After my review of the documents regarding the annexation of four hundred and twenty acres near the airport. I have convinced myself that the council was sold a bill of goods and that it was a bad deal for the. Our city and the taxpayers of our city. Build it and they will come. I have worked for the field of dreams in Iowa cornfields, but. There's nothing that says we should be throwing seven or eight million dollars at a property. When we don't even have a developer interested in building on this land. With this money, we could do many worthwhile projects overdue in our needed, in our neighborhoods. Consequently, under Robert Rules of Order, since this is the next ensuing meeting of the council. I, and I was on the prevailing side with agreeing to appropriate five million dollars for water and sewer. To this annexed property with the funds coming out of Riverboat and rainy day funds. I hereby move to reconsider ordinance number forty-six sixty-five. Appropriating five million dollars toward the seven point five million needed to meet the city's obligation. And request our attorney to investigate ways to void the annexation ordinance number forty-four ninety-eight. Adopted in two thousand and eighteen. I make that as a motion.
Please take that motion one more time, please.
Yes. I hereby move to reconsider ordinance number forty-six sixty-five. Appropriating five million dollars toward the seven point five million. Needed to meet the city's obligation and requesting our attorney. To investigate ways to void the annexation ordinance number forty-four ninety-eight adopted in two thousand and eighteen. And here's your copy and a copy for the clerk. I'm sorry, I copied for everyone.
Okay, we have a motion.
And here's a copy. Pass it down, please.
There you go.
And give one to our attorney, please.
I have a quick question about what we're looking at. I'm looking at this handout, the highlighted section right here. It's highlighted where it's the Councilman Bryant Dabney uh said this is a different scenario. We didn't have any commitments uh for the, I keep saying out by two twelve, when I made this comment, I was talking about.
We need a second.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll, I'll, I'll second it for the sake of discussion, sure.
And we have a motion by Councilman Paul Preswellinski and seconded by Councilman Don Preswellinski. Uh, Councilman uh. Dabney.
Yeah, I was just uh trying to make the comment with the, the first handout that came out, we have this highlighted section down here. And it talks about where Councilman Bryant Dabney, Democrat first ward, uh, said this is a different scenario. Uh, that we didn't have any commitments of any builders or anything like that for that property that we were talking about out there by uh, and I always say two twelve. Um, when I made this comment, I was talking about what's happening over here uh by the Walmart. Uh, cause we do have a commitment, I held up the picture of the building that they plan on building over there, so I'm trying to figure out why was this highlighted or what was they trying to prove? Highlighting my comment, when it, I wasn't talking about the property out here that we had to meet to commit to, I'm, I'm lost.
That also had my comment in there too. Uh, attack or anything like that. That was just the way it was in the newspaper, alright?
Okay.
I, I do have a question, cause I, I understand where you're, what you're, what you're um getting at, so. So we, we kinda went through this last um summer, um, when we were talking ARPA dollars and what. What we, how we're gonna pay for this and, and what our obligation and if we didn't do anything, what would happen? If we could go back um and talk to the owners, cause we're saying we have a legal obligation, but. Um, nothing's moving on the property that I know of, um. I don't know if, if administration or the. I don't know if, if administration or the controller's office went back, cause I think that question came up in our ARPA meeting, um. Um, I think Councilwoman Jigas, it was, we were in the E O C room and we talked about. You know, could we go back to the owners and, and extend? You know, we were talking about all these different things and I don't know if we ever got resolution. Or if we ever even had a conversation, um, mayor or controller Hoffmaster. Um, with um, the owners of this property, we just knew that we had an obligation and that. We would be on the hook or could be sued um, for it, so I don't know if there's something that. You could tell us differently that, you know, we could do differently or, I mean, we know we have a legal obligation. But is there, are there um, cases where um. We reversed it in the state of Indiana is what I'm trying to ask.
Yes, it happens, I can't tell you what would happen in terms of this in particular until I investigate it. I'm, I'm hearing it now, of course, for the first time, and I think that's part of the motion that he's asking is for me to investigate it further. To see if we can do it, but I have no idea as we're sitting right now.
My, 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 my question follow-up to that though is, do we have to? Do we have to, um, his most, the motion says. Uh, do we have to reconsider for you to investigate? I guess that's my question.
Yes, because if you don't reconsider, there's no reason to investigate, it was passed before, it's a non-issue. It becomes an issue if you reconsider.
Okay. And um. I, so as far as forty-four ninety-eight, I think it's forty-four ninety-eight.
Forty-four ninety-eight, the original.
Right. Yeah, so forty-four ninety-eight was the, the document in twenty eighteen, so have we spent, have we ordered? Um, cause we've already done, we've already, have we ordered the material?
No, we have not ordered anything. There's not been an engineering study done, there's additional money needed for that. At least four hundred thousand from the water, four hundred thousand, I talked to sanitation today, four hundred thousand from them. To do the engineering for the project, they did a map, but that's not the engineering. So all, what, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is to get some breathing room here. There's different ways to finance this thing too, and you know. If there's gonna be a development up there or out there. Don't you think the developers should have some skin in the game? This is a, a bunch of money, and I'm only asking to. Void the last ordinance that we passed. So there's still money appropriated. Out, sitting out there for two point five out of the ARPA, but I don't believe that's been uh. It, nothing's, nothing's happening, there's no developers even on la- on uh, been interested. So. All I'm asking is that we let our attorney investigate it, we stop any money flow. And we get the developers at the table like I talked about at our workshop. And to see if it's worthwhile going forward. And that's all I'm asking, because I think it's a wise thing, what, that uh, there's a lot of money. And the TIF and all that out there won't develop, that won't be, that stuff won't be paid off or. I don't like to say it, but it, it won't be paid off in my lifetime, it won't be paid off probably. At least, you know, when they do a bond for it. Or do any bonding out there, because you can't do any bonding till you get something on the property. You know, so you got revenue coming in, this is really, um. Here's what I'll say, it. We're vic- we were victims. Of what I see as bad planning. And, and I'm not, I'm not here to say anything negative about any of the council members, I just think that. It was bad planning and that's it. You know, I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, I'm just trying to get some breathing room here.
So, so to go back to my question, so nothing has been ordered, a- is, am I correct? So we're, we don't have the engineering study, I'm, I'm looking to the administration for that, that answer, because. We went through several months back and forth since June or July of last year. Talking about how long it was gonna take to order the pipe, order the stuff, order the this and order the that, and we passed it a month ago. So we haven't started. Anything with sanitary or water yet, Yvonne, or the order thing, or? Because. Yeah, so I guess, uh, I'm, okay, well, I'm okay with it then if we don't have any answers. That's it.
Uh, Councilwoman Jigas.
Yes, I have a question, so we are moving to reconsider these ordinances, we cannot just vote to void the annexation. I don't like that terminology on here, so I don't, I don't wanna say we're gonna avoid an ordinance, we're just going to investigate. What we can do.
Investigate ways to void the ordinance.
The only thing subject to reconsideration is ordinance four six six five. Yes, the appropriation, that's right.
Yep.
So that's like telling you that you can do research.
Yes. So you need comments from the public?
At least need to vote, there's a motion. You gotta ask for a public comment. But any comments from the public?
We're just in general comments now, right?
No.
Comments from the public on this uh, motion to reconsider ordinance four six six five. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public, public comment is closed, comments from the council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, so, uh, Ms. Nyla Bonneville votes please.
Ms. Till. Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Dabney?
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mister Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mister Don Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mister Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigas?
Aye.
And Mister Paul Preswalinski.
Surprise.
There are nine in favor and no one.
What did Yogi Bear used to say?
Okay, thank you, um. Comments from the public. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Willa Bay Moore, I live at five one five Gray Street, Michigan City. The um, un- unfinished business for the um, Social Status Commission. Uh, first of all, we don't know who our council liaison is, uh, secondly, um. The secretaries, we haven't had a secretary, um, through, I mean, we've had secretaries, secretary quit, had another secretary, secretary quit. Blah, 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 so, um, there was no training for the secretaries or whatever, so they really didn't know what to do and how to do it. And we just found out that we're like, what, eight minutes behind or something? And so we're working on, so the Social Status Commission is working on that, trying to get, catch up with their minutes. And get, catch up with everything and try to get um, their stuff in order. But uh, Mister Millsap said that the Swanson Center had sent their letter, so, um, that's why. But he's been attending this, his meetings, uh, Mister Hurt has been coming representing Michigan City Area Schools. Cause he thought that he was already processed or whatever, so somebody needs to let them know. That, that is, has not taken power.
Since um, you don't, this, you're behind with the secretary, I'll send the, I'll send something. If, if that's okay with you to, to those organizations.
Okay.
And, and ask that.
And they did not know the process.
Okay.
And they didn't come to me and ask me.
Last meeting and I will be the liaison, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, great. Right, trying to, yes, yes, she says Stacy has been awesome. So, um, and the other thing is, uh, the Michigan City Women's Commission, we are having a women's. We're not having a women's, to celebrate Women's International Day, we're having a workshop tomorrow at Krieger. Uh, and um, we didn't hardly get anybody from the city departments or the city to. Sign up to come to our function, I mean, you have commissions and then you guys don't support your commissions. So why have the commissions? I mean, we're trying to do the best that we can, we're just ordinary citizens trying to do the best that we can. And we don't, we're not getting any kind of support from our city council and from the department city, the, the, city departments. You know, uh, we put it in a, it was in a paper, uh, we advertised it, we have our Facebook page, we have the city website. And no city department people have signed up to come to our um, presentation, it's a free lunch from twelve to two. At um, Krieger Memorial Park discussing women health issues. We're discussing women health issues, we got Dune Brook coming, we have um, Dula, a lady from Dula, Sue. And Marilla coming, anyway, it's gonna be an exciting time. But why have commissions and not support your commissions? So if there's anybody available tomorrow, we still have room for you to come to. Support the Michigan City Women's Commission, uh, celebrating Women's International Day. At Krieger Memorial Park from twelve to two.
Thank you, Faye.
Uh, oh, oh. Am I on or are you going next, will we in order? Okay, you just used to go in, I know, I watch you all the time. Hello, my name is Kenneth Fly, my turn for public comment.
Yes, sir, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kenneth Fly, two eleven East Fulton Street, I'm sure that's been aware, uh, the emails went out. But anyways, my name's Kenneth Fly, two eleven East Fulton Street, Michigan City, Indiana. And I'm here today on behalf of a lot of people right now, so I'm gonna separate them up. Um, the first person I'm here under is uh, the Social Status President, the Chairman of the Social Status. And I'm here to tell you guys that we will be here on the twenty-first to your next uh, council meeting with the secretary and I'll be attending with her. And we give you updates on what we done with the prior year in our update report. So I just wanna let you know, we weren't gonna be here today, but unfortunately, we're eight months behind on minutes. You know, our officers been coming in and out, quitting and starting from all positions, from secretary all the way to president, even to regular members. So we've been, we've been up and down with that commission of that board for the last year, the whole year, not even some of the year. The whole year, so none of the year we were able to get a ball rolling and say, alright, this is our group. You know, n- not, not at all, and so uh, with the social status, cause I, like I say, I'm a lot of people. I gotta separate them, with the social status, we'll be here on the twenty-first, the secretary Conley will be here to present. I'll be here to support her, now I wanna go off of the social, social status, and then I wanna speak on the other person that I am. I am on the Richmond Corporation Board too, also as the Richmond Court Director. Last month, um, Ron Miller, our chairman, came to you guys and uh, he did a fabulous job on that report. I was sitting there watching it from the computer at my home. And I said, well, you, you go ahead on Ron, Ron Miller Chairman, you broke that down from the beginning to the end, and he just came to be our chairman. From being a chairman three years ago, but he just returned, and for him to get that good of a job on that report and know so much. That let me know he was diligent about getting it done. And so with the Richmond Corporation, I do wanna say that we have a good group of, a good group there and it's really vital on keeping a good group. And so what I'm making, meaning by that is, I know it's our appointment due for the Richmond Corporation for the council appointment. I wanna take stance right now and right here and tell you that myself and Rodney McCormick, we have a very grave bias against one another. And I'm on the Richmond Corporation for the last year, maybe two years now. And uh, any appointment of him on any board that I'm on, it would be confliction and it would be distortion. So I wanna give you a heads up on that, uh, the guy that's Jason Kirby. Um, I am aware of him, he's a good guy, he should be able and capable to still be on the nominations. I thought I overheard Gail say it, it wasn't there, it might be an expired, I'm not sure, I might have just been eavesdropping. But let's please make sure that guy is still in the group, he, he don't have a non-profits, he don't have any arterial motives to be on the board. Um, nextly, I, like I say, I gotta separate these people up. Nextly, I'm on the Housing Authority Commission. Um, let me see how many of you up there that maybe was tagged in a few emails. So it looks like majority of six, so with six of you that was in, tagged in the email, the reason why. Tagged some city council members in that email, so you can be privy to kinda of the situation and not have. I'm gonna scoot up a little for you, yeah, cause I see you trying to see me, uh, so uh, what I'm saying is.
Slow this thing down.
So I wanted you guys to be privy real fast, Sean, I'm gonna go fast, I want you guys to be privy exactly what's going on with the commission. I mean, with the Housing Authority Board, even though you don't govern the Housing Authority Board, all the appointments are done by the mayor, still, you still have some jurisdiction. What I'm trying to say is with the Housing Authority Board is a grave conflict of interest going on there also. Some concerned citizen gave the clerk of Michigan City a packet and said, send it to such and such and such and such. And tell them it's from a concerned citizen and give it to all the top officials. What I'm trying to understand here is, how can someone, a stranger from out, out on the streets, walk into the clerk's office and have a packet? That blasphemous about myself and the things that I represent and say, hey, I want you to uh, foul stamp this. And send it to such and such and such and such, and I'll be, pick up the rest and don't tell him my name and you send it out of the city clerk's office. And uh, and saying from you guys from a concerned citizen. If that concerned citizen was so concerned, he would send it from his own email, out his own email address and just had a foul stamped and did his own sending. So I don't know if that's best for privilege or if that's the way the clerk's office do, do the uh, files and stuff.
And I, I appreciate your concerns, uh, anyone can make a, a. Presentation to the clerk for us to consider, whether we consider it or not is up to us. No, as far as anonymous uh, concerns from citizens. Anonymous concerns, yeah, they can come in, wh- whether we consider it or not is up to us. Any other comments from the public?
Bernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street, Michigan City. I got a couple of things, uh, one that got an issue of a railroad crossing on Woodland Ave. I've reported it to the mayor, I've reported the railroad, it is getting terrible. It's gonna start damaging cars. So. I, I don't know who else to go to on it. It's, it's getting bad as Tilden was. And then the water tower park. I live right in that neighborhood and I've seen a lot going in that park. And I'm glad they're gonna improve it, I hope it stays that way. And vandalism doesn't get to it. But I've seen a lot of vandalism down through that park. And the little girl got killed right there by it, got hit by a car, so. I went to the meeting and they are proposing to put a speed bump on risky Ave, they're come, coming off of risky Ave. Put it on Broadway. Which. I don't believe will help any, cause people don't even slow down for the stop sign that they put in there. I've, I've, I've sat and watched them run that stop sign. Speed limit's fifteen through there, they put up the automatic speed limit signs. One of them works, the one toward McDonald's, the one, one on the other end isn't working. One of them out by tall timbers, they took it completely down, cause it wasn't working, put a fifteen mile speed limit up there. So. They're, they're not doing anything, it's, it's not slowing them down, people are not slowing down along those parks. People are not slowing down along those parks. That speed limit sign means nothing to a lot of people, cause like I said, I live right off on Gladys Street by that park. So I, I'm hoping they'll improve, but I, I don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollahan.
New Year.
Oh, sorry.
Just a minute.
Yep, Brian X.
Brian Wright, President of Michigan City Fraternal, Fraternal Order of Police, Dune Lodge seventy-five. Um, as Chief Horker pointed out, all of our stats on Michigan City Police Department were short staffed. Again, like he said, we're budgeted for eighty-four officers. We're down to sixty-nine at the moment. Since twen- or, yeah, twenty nineteen, lost twenty-two officers, which is twenty-six percent of our budgeted amount. Those are the ones that have left for other departments. Um, the officers that are leaving range from one and a half to twenty-plus years of service with our department. So we're losing a lot of experience going to other departments as we sit here and stand by watching this happen. Um, we're wanting to meet and discuss the lit tax as soon as possible to discuss the increase to our base pay. Lot of other areas have already utilized this, up to twenty-five percent raises other departments have had around us. Which is why we're losing officers to these other departments. We need to do this in order to retain and recruit officers to our department. Not only for officer safety reasons, but for the safety of the citizens that we serve and protect every day. Thank you.
Yeah, Tommy Clavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, just from the corporate right, just said, I know the Lepore County Sheriff's Office, they're currently starting, starting pay is now fifty-six thousand. Starting the first year before, it was only fifty-two thousand. After one year, they could become a full deputy at sixty-five thousand. I believe that's what Captain Leneski is now making. Didn't carry his merit rank over to the Lepore County Sheriff's, so he's now a full deputy. He's making sixty-five thousand now at Lepore County Sheriff's Office, I believe. Oh, he still work for the city? Okay, well. He came back? Okay, that's, that's what the, what the sheriff's officer paying, you know, they got big income, four thousand dollars. Um, I just wanna say to Ernie is Woodland Ave, you know, I remember Councilman Don Perez of Valensky contacted Senator, I believe Senator Mike Braun to get the railroad crossings fixed for Tilden, Ohio. Maybe Senator Braun said, the United States Senate has all authority and control and, and power over, over the railroads. So, you know, it's, that's who you, we, we need to contact if we need a railroad crossing fix or anything that has to do with the railroads. And I wanna congratulate the Michigan City Market Blazers. They did win their sectional. They, they're gonna be moving on and playing, playing the regional, playing for Triton. I believe it's, um, I think it's Tri-County, they're gonna be playing a team down about Kokomo. Um, uh, wish all our, our seniors, our, we have a very singular laden team, you know, Jamie Hodges and we also had a very senior laden cheerleading, um, uh, team. I know that person. I wanna say that the, uh, and I, application process for the Michigan City Promise Scholarship is approaching. Um, just make sure we, we pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Belinda Lee. Everyone calls me Bell, so I'm Belly, six oh six Gladys, Michigan City. Four six three six oh. I'm here because, so many of you may or may not know, my son was a Michigan City Police Officer, Stuart Christopher Henry Brown. It took him almost a year through that process to get hired and he was confirmed in the most historic police class in the history of Michigan City, the most diverse class ever. My son and his wife and, uh, their child lived in an Airbnb for thirty days because they couldn't find proper housing here. And then they came to our home where we welcomed them. My son is a veteran who had a three hundred thousand dollar VA loan and couldn't find housing. He left after spending almost a year to get a job. There was no place for him and his family to live because of housing crisis that we have here. So if we don't address all the pieces that go along to getting people to live and stay in our community, we're gonna have problems. And money does draw people. But where should they live? Where should they live? And because there are statutes that require that he has to live so far from where he works. So he looked further and further and those prices for those homes with a three hundred thousand dollar VA loan were out of reach for him and his family. So we have to put some things in place that keep people here because he wanted to stay. No one makes an investment of that amount of time, energy and effort without wanting to be here. So let us look at opportunities that include diversity, which is an inclusion when it comes to the structures and the infrastructure that we need in this city. Don't just consider money. That's important. Because people wanna live indoors and eat and have Nipco, have some heat and water. Let's look at what that looks like for building our city as a whole. Thank you.
Uh, Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street. Um, couple of things. First, I've heard a couple of officers on commissions tonight speak about lack of, uh, you know, minutes behind and all of that. One suggestion would be reaching out to the high schools, the debate clubs and the, uh, student governments. And I, I assume you have to be eighteen years old, so this is almost gonna limit to seniors. But you may have people in those clubs that would be interested in actually being on a real board. So that might be a solution for some of these boards that are having problems retaining officers. Although those students also may be leaving for college in the fall. Um, another thing I have, I mentioned, uh, the Singing Sands Trail on the west side going across the Amtrak tracks uh, earlier and no sidewalk there. You have to go out on, uh, US twelve to get, to connect the trail. The same thing is true in, in front of Blue Chip Casino. There's a bridge, you've got the bridge going over Trail Creek, there's a sidewalk. Goes right up to Blue Chip's entrance. And on the other side of the entrance, the sidewalk continues. But to get across the Blue Chip entrance at that stoplight, you literally have to either walk through the landscaping or walk out into US twelve. And I know that's something the Highway Department, you know, the Road Department or, um, Board of Safety or somebody needs to address, but I hope in the future any developments that get approved by the city, consider the sidewalks and the pedestrians and the people on bikes or pushing strollers, whatever.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Yes, you said.
One comment per resident.
Uh, well, he just said, uh, after everybody was done, I can go again, cause I got some really important things about my, my house being shot up.
Who was he?
Can I speak again, Sean, President?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, did you say?
I did not. I was gonna ask the council, what was their wish? Are we gonna allow extra comments?
If everybody's done, you can speak.
Is there consensus? Is there any objections? Okay.
Three minutes.
Three-minute limit.
Thank you, President, man. I was about to say, Big Sean, don't do me like that, Sean. My name is Kenneth Fly.
I was just wondering, who else was the presiding officer giving you permission to speak is what I was trying to figure out.
Oh, he didn't give me permission to speak. He just told me how it goes. He didn't say you can speak. No, I know better than Sean. Okay, thank you. Now, we ain't gonna oversee you like that, President. We love you. So, um, this is another issue I didn't able to get out because I, it's just so much. I'm so active in my community, involved with everything from little to big. My son's mother's house got shot up, over fifteen bullets riddled in it with my granddaughter inside the house. She was inside the house, my son was inside the house, his girlfriend was inside the house. Bullets went from top to bottom, side to side, everywhere over, and it's, and the bullets went all the way through the house continuously from the outside. You standing outside, so a person came on side of their house, which is an empty lot and basically with a tree in it, and then you got the alley in the park right there. Person walks up, walked up, stood like that above the house, maybe twenty feet and unloaded on the house and them bullets went everywhere. I don't know how no one got hit. No one got hurt. Her name is Sharice McLean, my granddaughter, my son, my whole life was in that house. Um, I feel like it was an attempt at assassinating all my family. Um, they hit the floors, crawled and squibbled into the bathroom, into the tub and, and screaming and yelling. The police was called, all of the following was done. I was wondering the shot spotters that we, um, that we is gonna work on or that they have. And I also came up here to support, you know, contradictory to all my other beliefs. And, um, I just, I just was wondering, how and when would that take place or is it only just that, I, I, we ain't gonna blame on shot spotters or nobody. We gonna just say regular humans, man. These babies running around here, man, and they, they playing Warzone, real life. You know, the computer games, they playing the video, they really getting the guns at eighteen now and really playing the, the games real life now, real life. But it was all them bullets. I don't see how it, inside her home is bullets in her shoe, bullets in her, um, right across her headboard, bullet all, um, whole, all the way through, um, one wall to the next wall to the kitchen. It's no one's fault up here, not the police's fault, you know, um, people kill people, not guns. So that's all I wanna say about that very important thing. And I just needed that to be assured and know that, uh, that I'm lost. I know I'm lost. You know, back in the days, I would want retaliation on my own. I've changed. I didn't can't be chasing nobody around. I'm ready to tell. I wanna tell. You hear that, Michigan City? I wanna tell. Okay, bye-bye, you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Fly. Any other comments from the public?
I have one more. Besides, I forgot one issue.
Oh, the litter in the town. This, this winter's been pretty bad. We haven't had that much snow, so the ground has been open. And the litter is really showing, especially out there by Meyer. My wife complains to me every time we go out, we see the litter everywhere. I, I brought that up at the, at the park meetings. Because when they come out of McDonald's, they dump their trash right there on Broadway. You know, so I just wanted to touch on that point. I forgot to mention that issue.
Yeah, Tommy Clavich again, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street about the litter, what Ernie Hollahan just said, um, you know, in Chicago, you go to Chicago, go quite often with my events, whatever, you go in any store in Chicago, you know what they're gonna do? This has been since February two thousand seven, they will charge you seven cents for every plastic bag that you take out of the store. That, 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 that's true. Uh, you know, that's what we should do. We should impose a bag fee. I mean, it's just my, um, the other thing, getting back to the annexation of Zolinski Farm property, you know, once this bond issue pays off or whatever, this tax abatement, uh, this, this, and this factory, the warehouse is gonna come. They're gonna come back and they're gonna, they wanna gas and say they can come back, ask for tax abatement. We've given so many tax abatements to all these companies up until the day I'll pull out. We need to just end all the tax abatements. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Comments from the council. Councilman Mejigus.
Yes, thank you. Um, I wanna report a little bit from the Tree Board of, uh, Michigan City has gotten Tree City USA status again for the twenty-third year, so that's really great. Yep. Uh, we are going to be giving away a thousand trees through two events. On April twenty-ninth, uh, the Sustainability Commission is having an Earth Day Extravaganza at Krieger. I'm not exactly sure what time it is. I'm sure they will be promoting it. And between that and the May sixth Farmers Market, we have a thousand trees to give away with little instructions on how to plant them. Uh, also, we're gonna be at the Farmers Market monthly. We will let you know when that is. And that's a good time to sign up for the larger tree planting. So we applied for a community grant and we got it. So we're gonna have larger trees that you could plant in your, you know, tree lawn. Uh, by request, of course, utilities have to be cleared and all that stuff like that, but there's a sign up sheet and just to kinda get more information from the Tree Board. So that's my little report about the Tree Board. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Presmasci.
Uh, I would like to, uh, apologize to the board and to the public for, uh, my mistake earlier this evening and, uh, don't, won't, doesn't happen too often. And I think that's the only time in my career that that, that's happened. Um, also, I would like to thank the board for, uh, voting on the reconsideration of the ordinance four six four five. And I, this is a fact that I wanted to, a couple of facts I wanted to bring up, but I didn't wanna put too much into it uh, earlier, is that the way I see it, that for the last fifteen years, the, there's been a, a huge bond issue and a bored pipe underneath Lafayette Street going down to, uh, A Street. So just so you know what we have here, it's a, at the time in eighteen, under the fiscal plan, it was se- uh, seven million dollars still remaining on that, on that tunnel to nowhere that needs to be used. There is also a project that was, uh, mapped out called the Lafayette Barker Sewer Project that's been stifled for the last fifteen years. And this is the, some of the things that our neighborhoods need, not only besides parks. They need their roads and they need sewer and water. So I just wanna say that, you know, there's a lot of things that we can look at. But people need their city services. And regretfully, I think that, you know, we had, uh, couple of years of, uh, of no paving. And I'm, I'm trying to figure out where, where these streets came from that were paving because it's not off the original list. I got a map of the second ward and I'm gonna start bringing it to the council meetings and I'm gonna sit it right up here in front of me on all the threes that are in the second ward. I'm gonna do inventory myself. But on a positive note, I wanna thank the Park Department. And I wanna thank the, uh, Port Authority for cleaning up the, uh, entrance ramp down in, uh, Washington's Park Basin. And also look, moving forward on cleaning up the north, uh, ramp. And I wanted to thank, uh, Pat Bolts. And, uh, who's a, uh, general director or general foreman or whatever the heck. But I wanted to thank you on getting that, getting that done. And, uh, also, uh, is it Glenn Moisen, who's the operator? I, and I wanna thank you guys. You know, you, you guys do a lot and a lot of people, you know, don't, don't, you guys don't get enough kudos, I think. But anyway, um, uh, and I wanna say that now people can go down there and enjoy that ramp, get out in the lake if they wanna fish or whatever they wanna do. And I, I just think that you guys did, uh, you guys cooperated with the park, with the, you know, helping out the Port Authority. That was great. So, uh, anyway, and Mr. Dabney, I wanna apologize to you again because I meant no disrespect by that article. It, it was just informational facts that were there and that's how they wrote it. So I hope that, you know, you know, moving forward, I will be looking forward on getting information together on this annexation problem. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just something I wanna bring up and, uh, this coming weekend, we're gonna have the, uh,
the uh basketball regionals in town. Next weekend, we're gonna have the basketball semi-state in town. And I brought this uh issue up to the uh Planning Director uh with the properties that are owned by the Redevelopment Commission, which are the properties that are on the north side of Maier Meyer Road. And all the litter that's in those properties there are the responsibility of the Redevelopment Commission to clean up. Uh that blue fence that's laying on the ground, uh that's belongs to the Redevelopment Commission. And I was promised that that was gonna be repaired. I haven't been out there yet this week, but I hope it's repaired and everything is cleaned up by Friday for our visitors that come here from Hammond, uh Mishawaka and elsewhere in northern Indiana. Don't have to look at all this uh garbage. Besides that, the citizens of Michigan City shouldn't have to look at all this garbage. Else uh also, you know, there's volunteers out there picking up garbage on city-owned property that we shouldn't have to do that. Uh and also on Woodland Ave, uh going all the way out to uh four hundred North and Pos Road, hopefully all that's gonna be cleaned up by Saturday game time when the visitors start pouring into uh Michigan City so we can make a good positive image. And as far as getting the uh property cleaned up, I talked to the uh uh Planning Director five times. I'm trying to get this property cleaned up so far. And uh hopefully it'll get done this week. And uh Mr. Houlihan, as far as the railroad crossing goes at uh Woodland Ave, you know, I I talked to the mayor and we will get a hold, I will get a hold of the uh US Senator's office and have that gentleman come back out here, take a look at that crossing and see what we gotta do to get that repaired. Because that's how that's how Ohio Street and that's how Tilden Ave got fixed is when the US Senators Representative, Tony's his first name, he came to town. I couldn't meet with him, but I directed him to the mayor. And once he came to town, he took a look at that. And you're right, Mr. Houlihan, the US Senate, the US Senate has control over the railroads. The US Congress has no control over them. So the US Senate, they put the heat on these guys and they get the railroad, they get it done. We all and we all have to remember that the 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 railroads, whether it's a C and all, uh BNF or whatever it is, these are all billion-dollar corporations and they have the money to repair these crossings and we will do our best to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Damm.
Real quick, no problem, Paul. Once we got it all straightened out and figured out, we voted on through, we're good to go.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the housing?
Yeah, I know. Ms. Fay Moore took my my thunder for the Women's Commission. Um I do attend though. She not it 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 wasn't me. Me and Del, you do go. But anyway, um I see a lot of council members at different events. So I just wanted to make sure that um I stated that, but we do have our event tomorrow. Um and again, the Women's Commission, just like the Art Commission, Sustainable, we have several commissions that are very active um and and the services that they provide to the city. And the Women's Commission, we adopted um a a platform for the year to focus on um women's health issues. So uh we have different speakers that attend. Um if you watch any of our our meetings, um we usually have a speaker that talks about a women's health issue. But tomorrow at at noon, um we'll be at Krieger Memorial Park celebrating uh Women's International um Month. So and we would love for you to attend. It's not too late. Um again, um there'll be food and there'll be speakers and we would love to see you there tomorrow. And again, um I would like to say, um just to reflect on what uh Mr. Clavich said, um great run by our boys. I know that um it didn't end the way they wanted to, but they worked hard. Um you have a phenomenal, um several phenomenal young men um that are seniors that I know it's not the way they wanted it, but the city was there to support them. It was packed in there all, you know, this all season long, but specifically during the sectional. So um there were some bad calls, but we won't talk about that. And um and again, let's put our bu- base our our best foot forward um with the regionals um since we're hosting for the next two weeks. And like Mr. Pribulans- uh Pa- uh Don Pribulansky said, um yeah, we need to make sure that we have a clean city for visitors that are here, but it should be all year round, as you said. So um you know, so again, uh please join the Women's Commission tomorrow at noon.
Okay, real quick, uh I'll thank everybody for coming out. There was a lot of passionate words spoke here, a lot of insightful comments. Um but what I think we should get the um get the most from is when we first set out to put in place the safety lit text, one of the main things and the the core tenets of that was to make sure that we can recruit and retain our officers. And uh I wanna make sure that we stick to that and we'll be working forward, you know, moving forward to make sure that we get the discussion going again. You know, that was one of the reasons, well, the reason we had our executive session. So we will be uh looking to, you know, have that discussion to make sure we do what we do, what we need to do to make sure that our our city is safe and and people want to be here. So uh that if there's nothing else, uh I entertain a motion for adjournment. It's gonna be.
Motion.
Right. Enjoy it. Good night, everyone.